Welcome, everyone. Thank you for coming out and spending your evening with us. We are here at October 7th, 2025. We're at the county building, the third floor in the council chambers. It is 7:00 PM time. We will have a pledge by Councilman Scott Wardle, and then we'll have a roll call after that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Scott. As far as roll call, we have our county attorney, Scott Brighthead, present. As far as council, we have Councilman Thomas, Councilman Hoffman, Councilman Stromberg, Councilman Abner, Councilman Wardle present. From our county manager's office, we have the county manager, Andy Welch, thank you for being here. Brittany Lopez, Assistant County Manager, Nikki from the clerk's office, thank you. And thank each one of you for being here. That will bring us down to public comment. Is there anybody in the audience by raise of hand that would like to make a public comment? Seeing none. That'll bring us up to Jeff. You're gonna talk about Tuilla Valley connectivity study. Thank you. And Travis, is Travis with you or is it just you?
I haven't seen Travis.
Okay.
I haven't seen Travis. He may have gotten stuck in traffic or something. Hopefully, hopefully everything's okay.
That's the way it started. He's stuck in traffic. I love it.
Nothing like being a physical witness, right?
There you go.
I'm sorry, Jeff.
No, you're good. Got Travis right here, so we'll just jump in. So, my name is Jeff Dupay. I'm the planning manager for UDOT Region Two. We covered Tuilla County, Salt Lake County, and Summit County. And with me is also Travis Hare from our central office. He's the project manager and overseeing the study from our central office. So, one of the things we'd like to just kind of review with you is the Tuilla Valley connectivity study. When the commission was out here a little over a year ago, they heard you. And so that's what led to us looking at this study more from a state network perspective and what the state network can handle as you continue to grow as a valley. And so that's really what was the impetus behind us taking an additional look into the area. So, we're going to just review the study. You know, we've brought this up a couple of presentations in COG. We're getting close to wrapping up the study, and so we want to make sure we circle back with you and kind of walk through what we're seeing, some of the recommendations, as well as we have corridor agreements that we're, they're working with the county and with the municipalities to either update or create new corridor agreements, specifically to where signals should go along SR-112 and SR-138. So, if we can jump to the next, let's jump to the next slide. So, as you can see right here, we're now in October. We're still trying to work through those agreements. And the reason, one of the things with the agreements that we're trying to do is we set these up with each individual organization because if we tried to get signatures for everybody, if changes are needing to be made within a specific community with those agreements, then everybody would have to agree to those changes. So, it allows both us and you flexibility if we need to, you know, adjust those agreements. So, that's why we have separate agreements with Tuilla City, with the county, with Grantsville, and with ERTA. So, if we can jump to the next. So, as far as the, and Travis, please feel free to jump in and talk as well.
There's another mic.
Okay.
Just make sure the light's green, please.
One of the things, one of the key takeaways we want you to take into consideration is the conditions today on the local and the state network. In some locations, they're struggling, i.e. Sheep Lane, i.e. 36 in specific areas. With, if no additional changes are made or no additional improvements are made, the system's going to struggle even more and be at capacity and be an approach failure. And we want to try to avoid that. We also recognize that Mid Valley is an important highway to the county and to this valley, but it doesn't solve all the transportation needs, whether it's east-west mobility or even north-south mobility. And so, it's really a combination of a strong local network coupled with the state. The state network is where we're trying to encourage everyone to work together and to work towards. Because it's, without that, we're all gonna, we're all gonna struggle. We know, we have a lot of needs throughout the state. You have a lot of needs just within this valley. We want to make sure that we're, we have a good plan of attack moving forward. So, one of the problem statement that we identified was we know there are significant delays along the state network. And depending on where these locations of major development that are coming in, what would that look like once some of those things are in place? And so, I'm gonna turn it over to Travis to kind of talk about, a little bit about the population and the employment. So, if we can go to the next slide.
Awesome. So, yeah, and just to reiterate, you know, as a part of this process, we met with all of the local governments multiple times. I think we had, I think we're up to probably over 20 individual meetings plus some larger group meetings. Like, there was a lot of feedback in this. But what we did is we took all of the, you know, those initial meetings. We got a lot of feedback of where development was happening or likely to happen, that you were getting kind of those pressures. So, those are all built into the modeling that we did. One of the things that I want to just kind of, you know, not hedge on a little bit, but the, it's all dependent on what's happening, what we know about right now. So, when Mid Valley goes in, that's gonna change how things are developing around it. Right now, there's not much out there, but once that middle segment goes in, I'm sure people are gonna wanna build stuff out there. And so, it's important to just realize this is a snapshot right now based on our best available knowledge. So, population and employment, what we looked at was what growth may occur based on plausible development plans. So, if you have developers that are in here right now looking at it or you're zoning, so I'm just trying to, then we accounted for that. And then we use that scenario for testing. Can you go to the next? So, out of that, this is what the population growth in the county or in the valley looks like over the horizon of the study. So, into 2050. You're seeing, you know, there's a lot of growth. In Tuilla itself has a little bit. Grantsville grows by quite a bit. ERTA also has, you know, grows compared to what it is now quite a bit. And the county also has some significant growth in it. The employment is the one that jumps the most. It's kind of outsized just based on what we know is coming for those port locations out by Grantsville. And so, the center of, one of the things that we've looked at and that we talked with Grantsville about is that the center of gravity kind of changes of what has been happening currently versus 2050. You're gonna have a lot more internal trips. You're gonna have a lot, you could have kind of, not a complete reversal, but some traffic coming into the valley for work rather than everybody leaving and everybody coming back in the evening. So, that's an important thing just to recognize. Tuilla gets a little bit, and the county also has some.
I think, staying on that graphic just really quick. So, one thing to recognize or we hope you recognize is that, so some of these projections may not, may not fit with what we also received from the Gardner Policy Institute. They have a tendency to, you know, make those a little bit more conservative, a little more constrained. With this study, we wanted to take a look at what you're telling us. So, this is data that you're giving us without those constraints of having the GPI numbers.
Yeah.
And so, there, as we're looking at those now, this is, this is one of the things that we are, we are going to be working back and forth with the Gardner Institute is specifically about the employment numbers because that has some specific impacts, not only to just vehicular traffic, but truck traffic. And so, you know, these are, these are, you know, best, our best guess, like Travis was saying at the time. But I just wanted to, you know, provide a little bit more information on the perspective that we're taking is based on the number, the growth numbers that we're getting from all the communities here.
And that's a good point. So, when we, when we model things for our long-range plan, it is kind of hemmed in by those. And so, you know, they may, Gardner may say, you know, we're projecting 3.8% where the development plans and the pressures you're getting may not equal that number, but we're required by statute to use that number in our long-range planning.
Just a question, when you talked about employment, as they commute back and forth, the east-west corridors become very, very important to move that traffic.
Become critical.
Not as much as Mid Valley, 36.
And that's where, you know, 112 is gonna be probably the biggest one to carry some of that, especially between Tuilla and Grantsville. But those northern pieces, there's not a lot of places that you can go fully east-west except for ERTA Way and, or if you're taking, you know, 138 over into it that way. Those are really your only two complete ways out there. Otherwise, you're kind of zigzagging between roads. And so, that's one of the things when we get to the maps here in a second, we'll kind of show. So, and here's some of the traffic forecast. So, again, we use the statewide model to predict what the stress on the network is going to be. So, it runs simulations and tells you where those are likely to filter to based on kind of where things are coming from and what, what things in the area are kind of pulling traffic to them. So, it does a best guess of what that's gonna do. So, based on, when we looked at this, the initial run, we looked at things that are in the dedicated portions of the long-range plan. So, we did not include the mid, the middle section of Mid Valley because that's, you know, an unfunded, unfunded piece. So, we looked at widening on SR-138. We looked at widening on 36 and 112. Widening of Mid Valley Segment 1 and then the installation of Segment 3. So, those were the pieces that were initially put into the model because we, there's at least funding that is anticipated for each of those. So, then we took the county plan, all of the local plans, and coordinated with each of the local entities to make sure, to try and stitch those together in a way that made sense and a network that was at least likely to happen. Go ahead. This is what that map looks like. So, you can see there's, I'm trying to read the key from here. There's collectors and arterials labeled there, some additional local roads that you can see. You know, the, those, the red ones are kind of the major network. So, that is some additional roadway, especially, you know, north of Grantsville cutting over to the northern part of Mid Valley. And then, but what you can see is that there's not a lot of additional east-west connections just yet. Can we go to the next? Next slide? You're good. Thanks for zooming in on that.
Sorry, I've done this before, I promise.
And so, here's kind of the existing analysis. So, this is what exists right now. So, right now, you're getting about 33,000 daily vehicle hours traveled by everyone on the network. In terms of delay, you know, there's certainly some traffic, but overall, 6% of the time that you're in your car is actually like delayed at a light or in traffic. By 2032, if we build just kind of the basic network, you've now got 53,000 hours of vehicle time every day throughout the valley, and your delay goes up to 8%.
The question on, so when you, Travis, when you say that, for today, is that funded? Those improvements would be funded, the current funding, the anticipation, is that funded now as we talk till 32?
So, to 32, some of those pieces are. So, when we added the network into 32, it was all of the local things. And then, I think it, did it anticipate all of those pieces that I just talked about?
No.
Okay.
Because with some of those colored, if we can go back to the Travel Demand Model, that future roadway network, it'll be back a few slides.
Yeah. So, that one.
No, one more. Oh, sorry, one more. There we go. So, that's only, that's only including, from the state network perspective, any widening on the existing segment of Mid Valley. Because that, you know, those are color coded to the specific decade scenarios. So, red is, red is that first 10-year period. Blue is the second 10 years, and the purple is the third 10 years.
Yeah, so that's just with that northern piece. The 2050 numbers will include all of it.
2050 is like?
Yeah, so this, this one right here that I'm showing next, that's 104,000 now hours per day, and your delay is at 18%. And so, that's with every, all of those five items that I listed. So, all of the widening plus the lower section of Mid Valley, all of those installed. So, recommendations that we took from there, that's our initial scenario just based on the network as we knew it. 33rd Parkway would extend from the west side of the valley connecting into Durfee in Grantsville. We would extend 2,000 north through the county and along the edge of the depot to SR-36. We'd, 2,400 north would extend to Sheep Lane. And then, east-west connections along the northern valley connecting 138 and Mid Valley. And then, working on everybody, with everybody to create those access points along the way so that everything, you know, is more efficient and there's more local redundancy. So, let's move to the next one. So, this is what that network looks like. So, you can see a lot, a bunch of additional connections in there. So, this, this reduces that 2050. It's, it's still a big number because there's just a lot more people out here. But now, instead of 18, that's now 15%. That's with the middle section of Mid Valley, I believe, at this point? No, not quite yet. So, that's on the next slide. So, that's with, so that's, that takes it down a little bit more once we install. So, this is why I was kind of cautioning a little bit earlier of like, once Mid Valley goes in, some of those behaviors could change just because there's nothing right next to it. So, some of that could change, but the model's not gonna be able to show that because we don't know what's gonna be there yet, other than the highway.
So, just a question to help us, I mean, we look at, you know, that 18%, 15 to 14. Give us, I mean, can you tell us other, you know, areas in the state? Like, what the percentages are so we could, for comparison? I mean, what is 14% of that delay?
I mean, it's.
You know, if I'm trying to travel down State Street and, you know, from downtown Salt Lake to Sandy, you know, what, like, what's that percentage?
So, as far as in travel time?
Yeah.
So, if you're, if, say, for example, if you're, if you're, let's use State Street in Salt Lake County as an example. If, if it takes me to travel from, you know, from the State Capitol down to, down to 123rd South where 89 connects back into I-15, if it takes me 25 minutes to make that drive, that 18% means it's probably going to take me an additional 10 to 15 minutes of travel time.
Yeah, and it's hard to, you know, give you an exact just because this is network-wide. So, if you're on 36, that's gonna be worse. If you're on other parts of the network, like if you're looking at this, those dark red areas, those are gonna be the worst, you're gonna have more delay there. The green areas are gonna be lighter. And so, so you could have something where, you know, it's, I imagine it would be similar to now where on a clear, you're not countering any traffic. It should take you 45 minutes. That's gonna take you an hour and 15. You know, that's kind of like it is right now. But I would imagine some of those pain points. And one of the things to note is we looked at the internal valley with this. And so, there are other pieces that are outside of the study area that I think me and Jeff would both say will help some of this, which would be improving the connection at 80 and to 201 and finding a solution for that, I think, will relieve some of the stress on 36, and that could make that network easier to deal with. But that's only one piece of the network. That, and 36 is gonna carry a lot of traffic either way. And so, but that, plus adding possibly another interchange on 280, there are other pieces along that 80 corridor that weren't, haven't been figured out yet, so weren't included in this study. So, I think some of those pieces will help.
And if we can, if we can go back a slide. So, you look at, and I think this is, this is where that 1%, that 1% 15 to 14 was, was maybe miscommunicated. Is when you, when you look at 36, you, and you can see how much traffic is using 36. Once you add Mid Valley, look what that does to 36.
Yeah.
That's, that's where more of your benefit happens. And there's some benefit to, some additional benefit to Sheep Lane. But as far as, as SR-112, as far as segment, still segments of 138 further to the west, Mid Valley, people are trying to get to Mid Valley. So, Mid Valley isn't, doesn't, isn't, that's why I said Mid Valley doesn't, doesn't provide the benefit for the entire valley.
Yeah.
It, but it does benefit 36. It benefits some of the local network because of where it's located. Additional things probably further west need to be, will need to be further explored.
Yeah.
For example, like, like what you see, and this came from your, your plan extending SR-112. And that has not, I want to clarify, there's, there was a misunderstanding that UDOT was gonna extend 112 up to Burmester. We haven't committed to anything about that. That's a desire, and I totally get that. But at least from a network standpoint, because of the way Burmester Road is currently situated, as it comes down into Grantsville and ties, tries to tie in there at North Street, it becomes nigh to impossible to make that, to make that jog. But if there's an opportunity to connect where, at that intersection of 112 and 138 and extend that north into the Tuilla Valley inland port, that, that can provide some additional benefit because that traffic doesn't necessarily have to get all the way over to Mid Valley. They can get up to Burmester a lot more conveniently to that interchange than having to get over to Mid Valley. So, that 1% difference is, you know, is overall, you know, from a, from a network standpoint, not necessarily, it's not saying that Mid Valley doesn't benefit. It benefits this side of the valley quite a bit.
And I think that's more accurate. I think the other.
Does that?
Yeah, and the reason, I talked to Jeff earlier about the 1% and in a presentation he made, and I was not at COG. Anyhow, it was taken up, when the question, I think, come up was that, when we get Mid Valley in, it'll take 1% of the traffic off 36. So, there was some real confusion there.
Yeah.
So, Jeff, I appreciate you clarifying, and so, I appreciate you doing that because that'll help people that was there at COG answer any questions, concerns that they have.
And unfortunately, you can't see it on the, on the screen with the, with the video over that. That, that area of 36 by Lake Point is still, is still needing a lot more help from the, from the modeling that I, the modeling that was done for the Lake Point Transportation Master Plan still shows about a volume of 72,000 vehicles trying to get to that, to and from that interchange, that area.
That's essentially Bangator.
That's, 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 that is, that is Bangator-type traffic as it is today in certain locations.
Yeah.
So.
So, if we're talking about comparisons now, this looks like the Salt Lake Valley in 1990. And what we're seeing is the east-west corridors, 90 is south, 7,200 south, 45th south going west. And we've seen UDOT have to go in and multiple, multiple expansions.
Yeah.
That's what you're saying with the north-south corridors.
Right.
The east-west cor, or the east-west corridors are in the same position, though. And not all of those are state roads, they're city roads, and how we interconnect there.
Yeah, and most of them aren't. And that's, and that's kind of where the challenge is. Is one of the things I was just thinking of as I was looking at the map is the north-south connections are essential, are, you know, TBD on the Burmester one, but are largely state routes that can get you north and south that you're trying to get to. But that internal, that internal network is all reliant on the county and the cities within it to figure out how to make those connections work with each other. And, and it's really, I mean, you're kind of at a tipping point. Like, your growth is, is here, but it more, a lot more is coming. And so, if you get, the sooner you can lock those down, the better off everybody's gonna be because we've seen, you know, my, my position is focused on emerging areas and areas that are gonna experience this stuff. And, you know, I don't know how many examples I can point to of people who didn't lock those down and then are trying to figure out how to move people in and out of their city, you know, five years later. We can look at, I don't know how many examples in Utah County of places that, that we're like, we'll figure it out later. We're busy, and, and then that just never happens.
So, as you're saying that, you know, we've already seen some of those issues arise with Mid Valley Highway where we've had alignments where businesses have come in and built. It's going to be very expensive to take out those businesses and relocate. And so, the proper planning on this, what we're looking at is zoning. We're also looking at upzoning or downzoning that needs to be taken care of, corridor preservation.
Yep.
And starting to zone those areas appropriately for corridor preservation.
And I, and I think, you know, at least on Mid Valley, I think we've now, we're now at a point where we can, we're starting, where we're able to do that more for at least our portion of it. But I think, you know, where, for those connections, it's a lot of getting these lines on a map that everyone has kind of hammered out and everybody's portion of that put on, on your plans so that when developers come in and say, hey, I wanna do something, there's a road that needs to go there.
And we're also trying, also trying to start those conversations with area property owners.
Yeah.
Because, right, because there, there are state, the Marta Dillery Corridor Preservation Fund has, has funds available if we can start those conversations. I, I know, I know in one of the recent COG meetings, there was, there was a conversation and wanting to explore using some of the county's corridor preservation to help with that. I, it can be a good thing. At the same time, if we can tap into the state dollars, I think that, then that frees up your dollars to use on your corridors.
Correct.
And I think that's, I think that's a better use of, of your, of the funds that you have. It's more, from our perspective, it's more helping, helping us navigate the, have those conversations, or opening the door so we can have those conversations with these property owners and explore their willingness to sell, sell the amount of ground that's needed to preserve Mid Valley now, knowing with, with the efforts that you're already putting forward in hiring a lobbyist to, to help get some additional funding for Mid Valley.
And I, and I think the other thing too is just, you know, along with all of the other cities and stuff is one, is we've got that alignment now for Mid Valley is really just, you know, as people come in to try and develop stuff going, this is the quarter. You can't, you can't be in there. And, and as much as you can, making sure that those choices are being made and that there's a network to support them so that they can use something else in the meantime until that gets built.
And I think that's what you're saying is buying up that corridor.
Buying, buying the corridor now, it's safe.
But you have to have a willing seller, willing buyer.
Yeah, that's, you know, because there's not a specific project with funding in the STIP moving forward, that, that's what, that, those are some of the restrictions with the, with our corridor preservation funds. It has to be willing buyer, willing seller.
Yeah, and I think the other thing to note is that we are currently in the long-range plan revision process. And so, we, the, the next version comes out in two years. We're doing all the modeling and all of the, all of the data collection and all of those workshops now. And we're, we're hopeful that that middle section is in one of the phases for the next time. The financial model didn't include it in the last one. We're hoping that it's in the next one. Can't promise anything because data does what data does, but, but that's what we're hoping for out of the next one. Can't promise anything cuz data does what data does, but, but that's what we're hoping for out of the next one. So at that point, we, we may have some more tools available, but at least we wanna have the lines on, on a map somewhere. So that when people come to you for things, you can tell them where that's supposed to go and then we can start buying that up as, as we're able to as well.
So to get on the funding list, do we have to have the corridor identified?
It's, it's already, it's already identified because of the environmental document.
Okay, so the funding, the mi- the midsection?
Yes.
Yes, the.
Okay.
Yep.
The whole thing, the whole thing had, had the environmental documents and, and that corridor is identified. It's really just that there's, there's several layers that kind of happen in that, in that long-range planning process. And then everything kind of gets funding identified for it. And that's where, at least in the last one, that middle section wasn't included.
And, and I just wanna clarify on the, on, on the funding, when we, because in the long-range plan, what we're talking about are funding projections. And so when these funding projections are, are made, then they allocate. You know, that, tho- those planning level dollars and say, okay, with, with, with what we think is gonna come in that first ten years. This is how much we're gonna try to allocate to um, to the rural areas. And so there's, there's a competition, kind of, not a competition, but there's, there's discussions and prioritizing those funds from a statewide perspective. And, and unfortunately, we're, we're in a position like, 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 like a lot, a, a lot of you. Is there's more need than there is dollars to cover it. And so they try to re, they try to allocate that as much as, as much as they can for each of those ten-year periods. I hope that, I hope that makes sense. Because the, the actual, the actual dollars for projects are found in the, in the statewide transportation improvement program. That's where the, that's where something is, is going to be a reality. Challenge with that is we are now programmed out to twenty thirty-two. And that's a, that's, that's how, how much of a need that, that we're seeing and we're also seeing a lot of cost going up, so. With, with the long-range plan, what, what, what we're, what I wanna try to communicate to you is, yes, mid valley is a priority. And we're going to, we're gonna push for, for that to be better included in the long-range plan. And not have some of these unfunded, identified but unfunded in um. In, in that category, we wanna try to make sure that, that, that's more reflective of, of what, what the needs really are.
So if we don't get on that funding list this go around, is it go to twenty twenty, but twenty fifty?
No. So, so the, every four years, we update the long-range plan. So those, uh, and we redo the model every time, so there may be things that, you know, and, and this could be good, bad, or otherwise for you. Is there are things that are in phase three that maybe they're kind of in phase three for longer than we wanted. Because that, because something else jumps up that's like, hey, we, this is a giant safety issue, we need to move that further up into, into the program. So things move around in there, so every four years essentially, there's another chance to do that. There are also kind of interim amendments that are made if something like that safety issue comes up or if funding's found. Through the legislature or through the, the Transportation Commission for some of those projects. Something will get moved and that, those funds will then get reallocated to something else and so we do make amendments to it, but every four years is the big change. What else do we have?
So, all that discussion. And, and this is great, I'm glad you, I'm, I'm glad you guys are asking the, asking these questions. Because you also have constituents that, that ask you questions, so we wanna make sure that, that you're understanding what, what we're looking at. So, a- all that said, it leads to what, what we're recommending is a, a more comprehensive future network. With a, a lot more local connections, um and then, you know, try, I, I, I think trying to have those, those conversations. About what, what one twelve needs to look like or the potential for one twelve to, to extend further north or some roadway. Going to the north, really looking at how, how we can better connect the valley. So that everybody, and hopefully everybody can be on the same page, so that we can start moving forward, even as, if it's small increments. That will be a lot further along um with small steps than if we don't make any steps at all.
Can I, can I just go back to that one for just a second, Brittany? I'm still gonna call that one twelve extension, so just so you know. Cuz that's where it starts. Now, one of the, this is a good map to start on because you're using our future transportation plans, which is from all the communities. And so one of the things that I started doing after we met last time was to start to put these into dollar figures. And so if you look at the red ones that, and this just shows that how, what type of road they are, but they, we had them by from twenty twenty-five to twenty thirty-two. And then up to twenty fifty. If you start going by those, those timeframes, if we use every dollar of corridor preservation that we currently have and will collect. We barely break even for that timeframe, so recommendation one is, don't use it for anything else. Just corridor preservation now. And so, but after, by twenty fifty, we're gonna have to have another twenty-plus million dollars just to buy corridors. Now, we can get some dedicated and, and certainly that will help as well, but if you look at constructing those roads, it's a lot more than that. We will be, we, we would have to be getting probably four million dollars in grants on top of COG money to construct some of those things. And so, we locally have a lot to do on our, on our side and this is how it all fits together. So this is the map that I've been using and we're, we're gonna fine tune that spreadsheet, working with the Roads Department, Community Development. Just to give you an idea going forward, what we need to do to try to get to our part of this.
And this should be, you know, at least, at least for the county's portion, should be pretty close to what you have already. There are some changes that were made just based on where other network connections were and, and what everybody else was, was trying to do just to make those make sense. But, but I think the county's plan that you currently have was, was one of the big starting places to kind of tie everybody together. Cuz you're doing the, you know, that mapping for ERTA, you're doing that for, for other pieces of the county. And so it should be, you know, not too far off. I would say one of the things, you know, when we get to the end of this, that we are looking for everybody to do is to kind of take this map. Look at what is different and update your road plans to, to match this since we've hammered it out with everybody. And one note before, I'll just tell you now before we get there, is we do have TPA applications, which will be opening. Which is the uh Technical Planning Assistance Grants. Grantsville is already doing a transportation plan for their, their part and redoing their Transportation Master Plan. So if, if you wanna apply for those funds so that you can just have somebody do those updates. And if you wanna loop in ERTA and the city and everybody to just kind of do that all at once, great. If you wanna do it independently, also great, but just know that there are funds available to pay somebody to do that.
Well, years, we put that map back up. Years ago, there's um talk about putting the one corridor that went right along the base of the mountains. Um on, on the east side of the railroad tracks that went into two oh one.
Right.
It's, it's there, you just can't see it. It's underneath the video.
It's underneath the video. It's there?
It's, it's on the plans, yes.
Well, cuz.
I'm not sure.
Right there, that's part of it.
That's part of it, one, one of the challenges is when you get into Lake Point and Lake Point is, has expressed a lot of concern about.
Right.
That corridor, trying to get um, get around uh over to Black Rock Canyon.
Okay, but yeah, uh there was talk about extending all the way up into path to ERTA and then coming in. South with the railroad tracks, with the railroad tracks across Dr. Bay, is that still being looked at or not? And if so, what does that, how does that change?
Yeah, I think that, I think that's that, that green line right where.
This is Dr. Bay right here.
Right against, right up against the mountains.
Yeah, it, so the, the, the current plan, just because, you know, Lake Point is, has expressed concern and has not included that, that corridor in their plan. We, we didn't wanna suppose that that was, that was going to happen.
Yeah, yeah, it was looked at, I remember right, right where the railroad and the mountain is really close together, right there and then coming up and right into.
And on, and on the long-range plan, we do have as an unfunded need, an additional corridor for two oh one. So the two oh one can run parallel to I eighty.
So that, that's, that's not even being considered now even anymore, except it looks like with.
It doesn't mean it's not being considered, but because, because not everyone's on board with that corridor. We, we thought it was more appropriate to not include it in this study.
So if I can on that, because it, it, it goes right along that, I mean, you've talked, you said you've talked to Grantsville, Tuilla, ERTA. Are, are they seeing the same thing, are you presenting the same information to their councils?
We actually, we actually met with Grantsville um last week, um because they've got a lot of the signals uh in, in, in their, in their um city limits. We still have ERTA and Tuilla City to, to, to talk with as well. We're also updating the, the corridor agreement for thirty-six with Lake Point, um so we're, yeah, we're, we're having these conversations. Lake Point has been in, involved in, in this study. While at the same time, they were, they were working on creating their first Transportation Master Plan.
And, and part of the reason, cuz if I look at this, there's very little, I would say, of all this that needs to go in. That's not in someone else's area, right, very little of this is actually county. So, we can help, we can support, but this cities, whether it's Grantsville or ERTA, right? They need to decide, yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna put these roads in and, you know, the east-west, it's, it's them. There might be a small piece that's gonna be county, but probably not by time we get.
And I think largely, you know, in the meetings we've had with everybody, cuz we've, like I said, we've met with everybody multiple times to try and get to where we're at now. We're, we're doing those, these final meetings to kind of say, here's the agreements and here's where the signals are gonna go, cuz that was part of it. But largely, everybody's on at least the same book, I'll put it that way, like, or at least, you know, similar nearby chapters. I think there are, you know, a few connection points that some people are trying to figure out how they're gonna make those work. Thirty-three hundred is one of those in Grantsville of like, hey, you, 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 this needs to go through or your network doesn't work. You guys are gonna have to make a decision there. I think for ERTA, they're, they've largely been on board and understand that like, hey, the decisions we make affect everybody and the same with our neighbors. I think their, you know, their biggest concern was they don't see how, they don't want ERTA Way to be the only way east-west. And so they would love to have some other option for that and they're willing to figure out how to do that. So I think everybody's, you know, like I said, they're, they're, we're in a similar area with everybody, I think everybody's largely agreed to the map. And largely agreed on, it's, it's mostly how are we gonna build this, i- is kind of the biggest question and. You know, there's a lot of funding that is available that Jeff can get into in a minute, in a few minutes too. But there, I think with growth comes a lot of that, a, a lot of those choices. And how we, you know, I, I don't have all the answers for that, but I, it certainly needs to get built.
Yeah, one, one of the things in our, in our conversation with Grantsville last week is, as the land use authorities. The municipalities, you, you really do have more, more authority than, than sometimes. Developers want, want, want to give you. Um and, and so that. You can require a developer to build a portion of that network. You're gonna need to do that because, you know, the tax base isn't there to, 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 to cover everything. So they have, they need to have skin in the game. That they're benefiting from it as they develop, that's, that, that, that should come part, part and parcel. With, with any development considerations by, by any of the municipalities or, or, or the county. As, as things come in. That, that, at, at times, you know, we, we wanna be good neighbors, we wanna work with, with people, but sometimes you have to draw the line and say. We need this and this is why we need it.
And I think that's where we really stress just, you have to have those lines on the map, because if you don't, you can't make them do it.
This came up in a meet the candidates last week with all the candidates running in the valley that president, or Governor Cox has. Talked personally to candidates about making sure we get light rel here and he said yes. Have you heard anything about that?
I, I haven't, um, that's going to, ridership and development is.
Go hand in hand with population centers.
Very much hand in hand with, with, with transit. And, and those, those units per acre have to be significantly higher. That's what, that, that, that's some of the conversation we're having for, um with the, the south portion of Salt Lake County and the northern portion of Utah County. Is your, your densities, for a transit corridor to be successful, it, it not only has to connect. To the right things, it also needs to have the densities, not, not that far off the corridor, but close enough to the corridor. So that it becomes viable.
We call it the Costco model, you have to have so many homes within a certain amount of area for a Costco to be built, we just don't have.
It's a very similar thing, except it, except it's even taking it up a level because what? The other thing that, you know, UTA or, or WLFS or anybody who's managing those types of networks is gonna look at is. Okay, we've got enough density for a station in theory, where is everybody around that going? Because if everyone's going different places, well then, now you're linking into a, to a network over here that now. You're doubling your transit time because you're getting on some other thing to get somewhere else and that decreases people using it. So, so it, it's a, it's one of those things where you've really, you know, if you look at, you know. Daybreak and things like that, that have been able to get kind of that red line extended down there, there's a lot there and there's a lot of tight townhome development. And a lot of stuff there, as you get further into southwest, that kind of starts to dissipate a little bit. There's still townhouses and things like that, but it's not as packed in there. And that's why it's been hard to, you know, there, just like everything else, there's limited transit dollars, so how do you justify that? So I'm not saying that that is or isn't gonna happen, but it would, it would, I think your development pattern. And where people are going is gonna determine that.
Thank you for making clarity of the conversation.
Okay, so um going to the, the corridor agreements, if we just jump to the, to the next slide. And the next slide. So just so that you know, we, we wanted to um graphically show kind of what we're looking at for, for one thirty-eight and one twelve. The, the widths that are gonna be needed, depending on, on what elements go into the roadway um prism. Is we're, we're looking about um just a little under uh, a hundred and twenty feet, so more than that, hundred and fifteen, hundred. Width, and but if you look at the, at this typical section, you also see uh a potential shared use path. You also see um so, some shoulder, we, you know, we need, we really do need shoulders um for snow storage. It also helps people um if needs be to, to get out of the roadway, um if there's, if there's emergencies. So we're, we're trying to, we're trying to communicate what that um roadway corridor width needs to look like. For both these, uh for both these roadways. And if we can jump uh to the next slide that, you know, that shows a little bit more, you know, the more, what, what happens more. Is that the edges get a little smaller because we, we, we're wanting to try to maintain the consistent lane width. Um throughout the entire corridor, if we, I think we should have one twelve, there we go. So one twelve, um we, we actually have quite a bit of space in spots. Until one twelve curls, curves up and connects to um one thirty-eight, that's where it narrows up. So, you know, that's where, that's where conversations need to happen with us in Grantsville. Is to, you know, what can we do so that additional development doesn't squeeze in on that and make it somewhat prohibitive. To, to really have a consistent corridor through there. The one challenge is um with, you know, speaking of any future extension of, of, of a roadway going north. Is, so we had a conversation with um the developers of the, the Tuilla Valley Port. They, they've only got eighty-eight feet is what they're, is what they're planning on, um and it's what they're. And, and so that constrains things quite a bit, but it, you know, it makes it, it makes it so that. You, you would have to have a tight five lanes through there. It's not impossible, but it's just a lot, a lot tighter and, and it eliminates a lot of the things that, amenities that you may want along the edges.
Such as trails?
Such as trails.
Trails, but also.
Sidewalks.
Also.
Or, or wide enough sidewalks.
And if it's going through the port, you know, and holding truck traffic, like trucks are not always the most considerate of where they decide they need to stop and do things. And so, you know, being able to have that width on those shoulders would also be huge, just so that if they're waiting to pull into something or, you know. If there's some sort of backlog there, that there's some room to absorb that, but.
Yeah, or, or you're eliminating like the park strips, a little bit narrower sho- narrower shoulders so that you can at least get the, the travel lanes.
Just to our, one quick question, I guess to comment on that. To our predecessors' credit, when they were um trying to get the thirty-third Parkway right away, it's about a hundred and eighty feet. Almost all the way to Sheep Lane. And so we have a, a, a good east-west there, where we'll have plenty of space for a long time. And so we have a, a, a good east-west there where we'll have plenty of space for a long time.
Yeah, and I, and I'll, I'll accept, I think, one of those cross-sections envisions, you know, a, a grade separated, multi-use path. So I think, you know, the more that we can solidify these things now, the better, just because then you've got a good network as, as people, as there's more people to use it, you've got people that have a nice trail network out here and can enjoy it out here.
And from an active transportation standpoint, as we've met with the Utah Trail Network, we've, um, we've encouraged the, um, one thirty-eight, at, at least, at, at least through, all the way through Grantsville Main Street to be, um, to be, for that, that team to consider, um, a, a multi-use path as part of the UTN network. We'll see, we'll see what happens when they come out with those recommendations. But we're trying to reflect that in these tipicals. Because of those requests that we've made. If we can jump to the, um, net. So one, one thing we had, this is one of the things we had conversations, um, with, with Grantsville on. We wanted to keep it in here because this illustrates a really important point, especially with the, that line graphic at the bottom. When, when intersections are offset, it creates a lot more conflict points. And by, by state code, we have to carry more, um, move more volumes, higher volumes of traffic. And so what we're trying to do is we're trying to let, let people know to plan your corridors appropriately, intersect, intersections on, on both, or, or, you know, the cross streets intersecting and spacing those appropriately because it makes the corridors more predictable and safer and more efficient. So you, you really, you really do get, uh, quite a bit of a benefit when, when things are spaced and, and, and connected properly. Then, you know, uh, you know, road that's a hundred feet on one side, two hundred feet on another side, it, it just, it just creates things. It makes, makes the, the roadway less efficient and much less safer. So that, that's one of the things we, you know, we wanted, we're trying to encourage everyone to take into consideration. You know, because those, you still have those opportunities to make these connections. If we can jump to the, um, next slide. So we, we've had some conversations and, um, there's, there's been a, some thinking that we're trying to restrict access. What we're really trying to say is, let's manage it. If we, you know, again, it goes back to that concept. If we, if we manage things, then we're better prepared to, for, for the future. So that, so that as, as you grow, you're, you're able to, to, to keep what you, what you really desire within your, your respective communities.
And, and really how we do that though is that the accesses that exist today will continue to exist until somebody changes the use on the properties. So if there's, you know, a, a chunk of houses, because this has happened multiple times, that's along a state highway and somebody wants to put in a commercial business, you know, some sort of commercial use, instead of those three houses, we're gonna have to take a look at where those entrances are and make sure that they work along the corridor. Though, just because those do not behave the same. And we wanna make sure that those are safe for everybody. So there was, that's, that's kind of what the question had really boiled down to is like, oh, I've got a house. If I re, redo my house, do I have to? No, none of that triggers as it's going, okay, I'm, I'm gonna have a much heavier use that's gonna require more turns in and turns out. We're gonna need to talk about that.
And I, I wanna be respectful of your time. I'm looking at the clock, I'm like, holy cow.
Sorry about that.
So I, um, if we can ju- jump to the next slide. So this is what, um, this is what we're showing in, along one thirty-eight in Grantsville. So these intersections are spaced at about a half mile spacing, um, along, in, in Grantsville and ERTA.
And then, so the, sorry, so the two signals that you have are at, uh, are, are listed there, one thirty-eight and one hundred east, and then one thirty-eight at ERTA Way. Because those are just on the, I think both of those are on the border of being in, but there's gonna be some, you'll have some part of that.
And then on one twelve. Perfect. Uh, one twelve, you've got the, you've got the intersection right there at Sheep Lane. Now, one thing to, um, I wanna point out is during this, during the study, we, as we were looking, um, at that signal and then trying to connect two thousand north to whatever that future road is along the north edge of, of the Army Depot, we saw that as being a, a, a benefit. And so that area is going to need additional conversation. And, um, so the signal's still going in, still planning to go, um, go in next, next year. But, uh, I, I, I wanted to highlight that because I think that's gonna require some, some additional conversations to see what we can do to better connect, um, that, that east-west route.
It's gonna be great to have that, someone who takes Mid Valley Highway quite a bit. Especially at five in the afternoon.
Yeah, so if we can jump to the, so here are some of the funding sources. We wanted to put this, um, put this in here. So I know in the, um, we're, we're currently working on, um, what's called the, um, UDOT one-on-one. Um, if you were at the League of Cities and Towns presentation, what, what we're trying to put together, uh, um, four to five module training program. That, that being said, while, while I will be that, um, primarily that point, point person, it doesn't mean I'm gonna have all the answers. So that's why I put Chris Potter's contact information on there. Um, because what, what, what my role, um, is, is gonna be is, you know, staying high level, giving you the, the, the detail that I can, but then really getting you over to the, um, the experts who are hip deep and really working in, in all these programs. So we wanted to put this in the slide presentation so you could see what some of those, those local, um, those resources are available for local governments with, with Chris's contact information.
What about funding going on through the legislature this year, the upcoming legislature? Is there gonna be cuts in funding? Do you anticipate?
That's a, that's a, that's a great question. Unfortunately, that's a question that's probably better answered by Carlos or, or Robert Stewart, uh, just because they're, they're in the, more of those conversations. I haven't heard personally, you know, if, if the legislature's looking at any type of, of funding cuts. I just know budgets are tight.
Yeah, I know budgets are tight, but I, I would also, you know, we've hammered it pretty good about, uh, you know, all the work that we're doing, so hopefully not, but TBD.
And what I was thinking with the Olympics coming, there's, I've heard the news and they say, hey, a lot of money's gonna be to the Olympics. So I just wonder.
As, as, as my understanding with, with the Olympics is that, the, the Olympic Committee has been communicating to the, the IOC that we have a lot of the infrastructure in place. Whether, whether it's the actual amenity, not the amenities, but the facilities for the, for the events, but also the transportation network. And we're putting, and we're putting more of our, um, our efforts into, into mass transit to, to, I think that, 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 those were some of the messages that were communicated, um, there. There's a, I'm, I'm just not aware of any windfall coming the state's way for federal dollars. So I, I, I don't wanna speak for the legislature, but, you know, from my little crystal ball, I don't, I, I'm not expecting that we're gonna see a, a huge inflow of cash.
Yeah, you know, going along with what, what Jeff said earlier, where we're programmed out to thirty-two, the line that I've been given was that nothing that's not in the plan is anticipated. You know, there may be some shuffling of order, but there's no like new projects that are supposed to happen, at least from our end. Again, not to say that the legislature couldn't go like, no, we need this new thing. But at least from our end of things, that's, that's what we've been told.
Great questions. Okay, I think. So as, as, as I mentioned in the beginning, um, so what we need to do with those, those agreements is get those agreements over. I, I don't know, Andy, if we send them to you. And then, you know, Scott, probably you'll want, you'll wanna review those so that we can, you know, if there's any questions, we wanna work through that with you, um, so that we can get, get those, those signed. Um, and, and then we'll, we're also working on finalizing, finalizing the report.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming out.
Can we get a copy, can we get a copy of this? Thank you.
And you're getting these agreements from all the good luck. That'd be great.
No, we've worked okay so far, so.
Okay, that will, uh, bring us down to minutes. Is there, um, on September second, twenty twenty-five and September sixteenth of twenty twenty-five, is there any additions, corrections? Hearing a motion from Councilman Hoffman for approval, is there a second?
Second.
Hearing a second from Councilman Thomas, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those that may oppose, say nay. That sounds unanimous. Uh, check registry, again, every check that is written from the county is on our website. Encourage you to take a look at that if you'd like to know. Chair to entertain a motion on check registry.
Submit.
Hearing a motion, Councilman Wardle, second from Councilman Hoffman, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those that may oppose, say nay. That is approved. That brings us down to our discussion for the SFY twenty-six state behavioral health funding, uh, local funding agreement, Peter Clegg. Thank you, gentlemen.
Is there a way to share slides? Okay, good evening, counsel. Thank you for letting me address you tonight. My name's Peter Clegg. I'm the Director of Human Services for, for Tulare County. And as you see on the agenda, excuse me, see on the agenda and the attachments, that, uh, the department has executed several different service agreements with our various provider agencies, uh, those that deliver, um, behavioral health services. And, uh, we have approached this slightly differently, I mean, have in the past. And so I felt like it warranted, uh, approaching you tonight to kind of go through, uh, what's different and, uh, maybe add some additional context. So, uh, really just wanting to look at, you know, the, where does the funding come from? What, what is the department doing differently in executing these agreements? How are the funds being leveraged? And, uh, how, how does this, these changes benefit county residents? So the first thing in establishing context is, is that, uh, the county is designated as the Local Mental Health and Substance Abuse Authority as per state code. And with that, we get, uh, about three point five million dollars in pass-through funds for behavioral health services, whether it's mental health and substance use and substance use prevention. And the source of those funds, it's a mixture of federal funds and state funds. And, um, there are some strings attached with some match. Um, but it's, uh, in comparison, it's only about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we put in match. And not all of the funding buckets have match associated with it. And then of that three point five million, about four hundred thousand goes to, uh, SUD Prevention Services, which we, uh, collaborate with the Health Department and the prevention team, um, is the day-to-day operations are seen with them. So, um, with these, all these, uh, these state and federal dollars, which I'm just kind of calling the behavioral health services funding, it kind of gets put into fifteen ranges, fifteen, sometimes eighteen different buckets. And they're kind of earmarked for, it could be early intervention, I mentioned prevention. There, there's gonna be some for, uh, recovery services. Some are, uh, uh, a large ch- uh, portion of them are earmarked for services, safety net services, direct services for those that are underinsured, meaning they don't have Medicaid, which also falls under our umbrella. But then those that maybe they have super high deductibles and, uh, and so we can put them on a sliding fee scale with our provider network. So that way, uh, they can still be seen and then they can get case management support to enroll in Medicaid if, if necessary. And so, um, all this is nothing new. What is new is that, um, we felt like, uh, kind of looking through the lens, the county's, um, strategic goals of transparency and customer service and, I'm trying to remember, quality of life, I believe is the third one, really looking at, you know, how are these dollars really being leveraged in a way that is meaningful to county residents? And so some of the main concerns that were identified in the previous model, which was we would get the funding and then we would kind of, we had it included in our contract with our managed care, uh, organization, Optum, to redistribute in different types of agreements. And it was kind of just whatever stuck worked. But then we would be left with a lot of funding, uh, that wasn't spent and that would reflect negatively upon the county and upon the department. And, uh, mostly because this Optum's, uh, model is set up for fee-for-service claims. And not all, the, the funding can be, that the behavioral health funding can be leveraged for piloting, piloting new programs, investing in, uh, just kind of expansion efforts, really addressing what those specific needs of the community are rather than fee-for-service directs claims kinds of, uh, things. And so, uh, there was lack of, uh, flexibility there. Also, there was concerns from state audits that we've had in the past where there was recommendations to be clearer in our, how we're, uh, designating our subcontractors, so that we're not falling as much into that, um, sub-recipient category. So anyway, so what we ended up doing is that we looked at existing contracts that have been, have executed, uh, through Optum on our behalf. And we looked at, okay, what ones can have clinical oversight that we want to remain with Optum? And what ones can be just on an invoice programmatic basis between the county and providers? And, um, came up with new agreements, uh, in place to kind of capture that and make sure that the county always had a role, even in those clinical services as well for oversight and governance. And, uh, we have introduced a standardized quarterly reporting tool and, uh, really set things up so that our provider network can communicate with the department directly for technical support and assistance, especially through all these different changes. And really just focusing on accountability, innovation, consistency, consistency and collaboration with our network. And some of the things that I, I don't know if you guys got the handout, I placed them up here, did that come out? So you can see how each of these different buckets of funding kind of have been redistributed through our, these different agencies. And, uh, the ones that are highlighted in, in kind of like a peach color are new programs, things that we're kind of seeding money into, um, either, or piloting or kind of extending in, in different ways. So really looking at recovery-based services with peer support specialists in the jail, expanding that to both the female and male inmates, that's a new addition. Some improvements to our MCOT services, uh, implements, uh, the seeding, a pilot for youth day treatment, which is a par- partial hospitalization service. Currently, uh, we have, uh, youth that are being bu- uh, bussed in a van, back and forth in the Salt Lake Valley every single day. These are high-acuity kids and, um, have different maybe emotion, emotional challenges and things like that. Shoving them into a van and making them, we heard about the, you know, the transportation challenges for our, our county. Um, it's, it really just isn't the, the least restrictive environment for them. Working with a partnership with the school district, um, to collaborate, making sure that we, there's an educational component. Anyway, a day treatment is far overdue, uh, a youth day treatment program. And, uh, and a contractor's been identified for that, for that pilot. And we're looking at having that started as soon as January of this upcoming year. Different workforce development, uh, projects that we're working on early intervention. So mental health counseling is being delivered onsite at, uh, the Boys and Girls Club for, um, kiddos that have been, uh, identified as eligible for those services and some different data and evaluation projects that we've done some cost-sharing agreements with the Health Department. So all, um, pretty much all of these things, um, to some extent have been augmented or enhanced because of our more immediate role in overseeing these funds versus the, the model that we have been implementing the last five years. So again, the, the, the emphasis is, the emphasis is on like outcomes and effectiveness. And, um, so really, you know, focusing on these quarterly, quarterly outcome reports and, um, you know, continuous data collection. We want to be moving the needle and making meaningful change. And, and so, uh, we know that since this will be a baseline year, there's not a, oh, that's spooky. The doors are closing. And, and so, uh, we know that since this will be a baseline year, there's not a, oh, that's spooky, that door just started closing. Um, that uh, that, that this will be a baseline for data, so, you know, we're, we're being pretty flexible with folks and just kind of looking and experimenting, seeing what works and what doesn't. But really want to build off of this year by year and see how can we invest these dollars in a way that's, that produces meaningful outcomes? And uh, really aligning with our county goals and objectives and as well as the department's uh, goals. So, uh, really again, just kind of reinforcing that part, uh, the role of partnership and transparency. We have really great providers and, and partners out here in our community and looking at ways that we can allow them to do what they do best and um, and deliver the services to, to our residents and, and supporting them in, in those ways. That the, like I mentioned, these agreements that are uh, have been attached to the agenda, have been executed um, by the county manager, uh, we're hoping to kind of open up some discussion, but have it be ratified at the next meeting is my understanding, or can it be ratified? Excellent.
Mr. Chairman, if I can just say, uh, watching part of this process, and I've tried to do it from a distance because we would ratify it. Peter, your leadership has been tremendous, it has brought continuity, um, it is, you, you're really fulfilling what your mission statement is in that. And we appreciate what is happening in the direction that's getting it, it makes it more cohesive. I believe we're becoming much more efficient in how we're providing services, which in the long term will always benefit the citizens, so thank you.
Great, thank you. Are there any other questions?
Any questions or comments?
Yeah, I'm looking at this, there's several, seven line items here on this that you handed out that say direct service for individuals meeting underinsured criteria. What underinsured criteria are you talking about, is it health insurance criteria?
Yes, that's exactly right, so, um, like I mentioned that we, we still include our managed care partner, Optum, in that process in establishing those thing, those guidelines, but really what it is, ends up kind of amounting to is a standardized sliding fee scale, so based off of income, so.
So is, is, are these people in the exchange or not, or they don't qualify for the exchange? Cause I'm, I'm just wondering why, wi- with the exchange out there, why do we need stuff like this?
Uh, a lot of it comes back down to high deductibles, and so i- it's, it's unfortunate because it, I, I, I see, I see both sides of it where this could be hindering people working towards those deductibles because they are getting better fee-for-service rates um, on a s- uh, sliding fee scale. Um, and oftentimes it's not going towards it, you know, the little bit that they do put in, isn't going towards their deductible. But also, we see that a lot of folks, um, maybe not have the, the uh, maybe the, the acuity or assistance or know-how to get onto public payer systems like Medicaid or CHIP for their children. And so, that's kind of baked into these agreements for these safety net services, is that case management component and working with them to see if they qualify for public payers.
I just thought Obamacare was going to solve all the health problems.
I know, it would've been great, right?
Apparently it didn't.
Even during the shutdown, you throw that zinger.
You know, I can, uh, just like, I go to a lot of these social services kind of meetings and conferences, and I appreciate Ty's uh, concern about that, but this business is only going to grow bigger and bigger and have more impact on our families. Plain and simple, and I just want to echo what Scott said about complimenting you on your leadership, bringing this all together. Peter, thanks, and to the people that work with you and your collaboration is, thank you very much.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, Peter, appreciate it. Discussion on the twenty-twenty-six tentative budget, Allison, you've been waiting long and hard.
I didn't see that on the agenda, I thought it wasn't on the agenda.
Oh, it's, it says number B.
Well, I don't have anything for you, I can do a little bit of, um.
Sing a song for us.
Um, council, um, I can go over a little bit, I apologize, I didn't, that wasn't on the agenda that I printed out on Friday, so I didn't see that there.
Oh.
Um, I will tell you, um, we do have the um, agenda or the budget ready for you to go, we just actually finished uploading it tonight around six o'clock. We had some Tyler issues this week and we were able to get it to go. Um, one, what I was planning to talk to you before I realized it wasn't on the agenda, when I thought it wasn't on the agenda, but um, what um, we were going to discuss with you tonight is it, um, just where we were kind of coming up with some of our information, um, specifically the COLA increases, um, merit, um, and kind of the process that we walked through with the department, so I can briefly touch on that. Um, we did have the department start entering their information in, in the September timeframe. Um, it's a collaborative process, as it always is, the department's met with the manager's office um, and, and worked through everything that they were planning for the year, uh, as far as projects, equipment, employment requests. Um, we then compiled all that information and um, have submitted it to you um, in the projects, equipment and personnel, so that you can look at all that and, and tell us what you, how you want to move forward. Um, I'm confident in how the budget looks, looks right now, our fund balances are in good shape. Um, right now in the general fund with everything that all the departments have asked for, um, it shows us that we're, it shows that we're only dipping into the fund balance by two million dollars, which is a great place to be right now. Um, we do have several capital projects that the departments have asked for, um, great things. They mentioned the thirty-third Parkway, that's one of the projects that we've asked for, the sheriff is asking for um, a training center that we've been saving for, for the last several years. And great uh, road projects and things like that. Um, I will be prepared at the next meeting for what's slides, as far as the um, COLA and merit increases, um, recommending um, a three-point, now I can't remember because now I'm caught off, but a three point two-five, I think, either, I think it's three point five, I can't remember.
Three point two-five.
Thank you, thank you, sorry, yeah, thank you. Um, and that data just comes from gathering all the information, we're waiting for the last C P I data to come in, um, but that's consistent with um, across-the-board uh, inflation rates and things like that. Um, and so I'll have that data prepared for you, and I apologize, I didn't, I didn't see that on there, so, but.
Problem, so you're up here for the line item?
I am, that's exactly why I'm here, yep.
We'll go on to the next one.
All right, um, so we do have two line item adjustments for you, um, this is moving funds from our contingency line to our um, auditor or independent audit line and our uh, property pills line. Um, this will just cover the uh, payroll audit that we're working on, as well as the centrally assessed audit for the Rocky Mountain Power and U S Magnesium one that we're working on, so, any other questions?
Counsel, any other questions? Okay, and that one would uh, is that, that's not an increase, that's just moving line item. Charity entertain a motion.
The motion that we approved, the line item transfers.
Hearing a motion from Councilman Strumberg, is there a second?
Second.
Hearing a second from Councilman Thomas, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those may oppose say nay, that passes. Uh, ordinance twenty-twenty-five dash one-four, or fourteen, dissolving the uh, Desert Peak Commercial Community Development Project, Nathan.
Thank you, uh, Councilman Hamner, um, so, in the R D A meeting that just happened about an hour and a half ago, uh, the R D A board dissolved through resolution to, uh, sorry, two project areas, yes, I'm here present. Um, two, two project areas, the Desert Peak Commercial Community Development Project area and the North Stansbury Retail Community.
Uh, council, you're okay if we take them both together? Okay, thank you.
Sorry, thank you chairman. Um, so the, the resolutions that are bo- these are not resolutions, the ordinances now, we, this is a two-step process, the board had to do resolutions to dissolve those, and now you as the legislative body need to pass ordinances to dissolve both of those uh, development project areas.
Isn't that a conflict of interest, that sort of the same people?
Are, do you feel that there's a conflict?
I don't know.
I, I don't either, I mean, I, I, if you see one, I um, I'd be interested in hearing what it is.
Trying to throw mud on the wall and see what's.
Yeah, no, since I'm already up here mumbling already, um, so, if you pass these ordinances, those two project areas will be dissolved, and we will authorize manager's office to send those notifications to all the different entities that need to know about those dissolutions.
Any questions or comments from the council? Not, thank you, Nathan, I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, you're, no, I'm done.
Charity entertain a motion.
So moved.
Hearing a motion from Councilman Hoffman, is there a second?
Second.
Hearing a second from Councilman Strumberg, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those may oppose say nay. That is adopted, that brings down to boards and committees, and I'm going to turn some time over to Councilman Thomas to present a name.
Yes, uh, for the audit committee, there is a, we have an application from Dell Jones who lives up uh, above Stockton in Soldier Canyon, uh, he's applied to be on that, uh, to serve on that board. Um, the resume and, and the application's been sent out, so I'm going to make the nomination to appoint him to the uh, audit committee.
You've talked to him about expectations, thank you, Councilman Thomas, any other questions or comments from the council?
Did his house get flooded on Saturday?
No, where, he lives up on the hill.
Okay.
Not too far from the burn scar.
Okay.
Right where it started, right from the point where it started.
Okay. Charity entertain a motion, it, or did you just make a motion? Excuse me, hearing a motion from Councilman Thomas, a second from Councilman Wardle for approval of Dell Jones on the audit committee, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those may, may oppose say nay. Okay, council, just encourage you to present your names or get those names in, so that we can fill those capacities on the audit committee. We also have other ones that have some vacancies, if you know of anybody in the area or anybody out here that uh, think of somebody, uh, we invite them to pursue that, uh, to look and fill out an application and certainly talk to anyone if they would like to, to see what their, um, what would be expected and what they can expect from us. With that, we'll have some council updates, uh, Councilman Hoffman, any updates?
The only update I have is on Monday, everybody was expecting to go out to Gold Hill with me, if you remember that, had the shark reserve to go out there for that mine tour, but they canceled that this afternoon because they realized it was Columbus Day, and nobody from the county wanted to go anyways, but I was going to go, so.
Thank you.
Thank you for your sacrifice.
Going out to Gold Hill with me.
Did you have your panning all ready, start digging for some gold?
Yeah.
Okay.
I was ready to go out there, but we're not going out there now, at least I'm not going out there.
Councilman Strumberg. Okay, Councilman Thomas.
I do, I have a fun one, last week, prevention at the Board of Health did a save the family dinner night. And they went down to the pavilion at the, uh, by the swimming pool, put on this, they do it every year, it's a national event where they do this, they go out and encourage families to go eat together as families, and I, I think they need a big shout-out to prevention department that are at the Board of Health, to the good work they do, and so many times it's overlooked, so, anyhow, that's a big shout-out to the great things they did.
Thank you, Councilman Thomas, Councilman Wardle.
Uh, by way of story, I, I was traveling this weekend in Montana where it did snow on us on Sunday, um, which was terrible, not going to lie, I do not look forward to this. On Saturday, I was in Glacier National Park, which was absolutely beautiful, until it started raining. And this brings me to the topic, I want to publicly put into the record that how much we appreciate our, our first responders, our police officers, sheriff's deputies, fire departments, emergency management uh, individuals who tackled a fairly rough weekend this weekend. And Brittany, thank you for keeping us and the public updated, it was interesting as, over the course of years when these sort of things have occurred, I tend to stay on my phone and I'm very much glued to the situation and, and very worried. It wasn't that I wasn't worried, I was completely confident in our people. And I think that's the highest compliment that a, a normal stressed-out guy could say to someone, so, uh, thank you for all the work, thank, and please pass that on to all of those, not only in the county, but in the cities who did an incredible amount of work and, and we're grateful the flooding wasn't worse, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Wardle, sometimes I hate going last, cause everybody takes some of the stuff, but uh, again, on the flooding, I appreciate uh, Brittany, you were always available, uh, if you didn't know, Stansberry Park received three point seven inches water, according to K S L. Um, that's four months in one day, or less than twenty-four hours, so that was a lot of um, moisture. We, we didn't realize down in Stansberry that our faith was so powerful, we prayed for moisture and we got a flood, but uh, we, we appreciate you. What, come on.
May, maybe you're more, maybe you're more like Noah's people.
We, we appreciate um, the gaunt of communication, and I know that we're still going that way. The other thing as an update, uh, C J C had their fundraiser, the blue jeans, black tie, we appreciate that, they um, in, in appreciation, the many, many involved in the support of that, we know how vital that is to the youth and the children that uh, need to be taken care of, and so, uh, we really do a shout-out to the community and their involvement in that. Again, we have businesses that are constantly opening up, we just did a ribbon cutting for Jack in the Box, uh, and we have um, six more that are scheduled next two weeks, and so there are a lot of businesses that are opening up, so, um, we are in growth, and that's what I was going to say with the U dot people, that we, we have a lot of businesses opening up a lot of people. Last thing is, there was somebody in the audience that had a wedding that, um, with a big smile, congratulations. Um, she's no longer your concern, it's somebody else's, no, I'm just teasing, uh, congratulations on that. Um, with that, we'll turn some time over to the manager for his update.
Just one thing, as all I'll say is just thank you for the, your comments, I had the same sentiment that Councilman Wardle did about the storm. I didn't worry, we had good people on, and, and Brittany was key to that, and I'll have her explain just a little bit here, but just our roads department and our parks and rec, they all chipped in and had the equipment, and were great in just taking care of what needed to, to be done, so, kudos to them. Brittany, you want to just mention a little bit of what, what's happened, where we're at right now?
Um, I'll just give a quick debrief, so Saturday, um, bright and early, I, I actually arose to the fire pager for my husband's side of things. Um, but quickly after that, I received a call from Bucky, Bucky was dispatched to Soldier Canyon where we had a substantial amount of uh, debris coming down from the fire scar still. Uh, quickly, the roads department was already dispatched to get a grader right out there, close the canyon down, we did have campers up the canyon. I bring that up because what I want to talk about a little bit is, Bucky ho- holds these drills all year long that teaches us how to react in this, and um, we were seamless, the minute of the activation of the E O C, um, we had members from the school board, um, the prevent, uh, I'm so sorry, the hospital, um, we had some county staff, that is, staff that's been trained to assist and help just moving papers around and writing on boards as information's coming in, we had community development there, we had community development out in the field. Um, it's not likely that we typically have parks and rec out, parks and rec was out assessing damage, uh, facility was out assessing all of the buildings, sadly, we had some flooding in this building, I'm glad it was just your guys' offices. It was really great to see our teams working together, um, it was exactly how it's supposed to be. Um, I was in communication with Tulce City and Grantsville City, Bucky was in communication with the smaller municipalities. Um, it worked like it was supposed to, so it was really great, uh, we did a little after action, there was maybe a few comms that we could have done a little bit differently on, but it, it, it worked really well. Um, with that being said, at this point, we still only ha- we still only have self-reported twenty-nine homes uh, two that meet that critical criteria, and I, uh, we keep posting information about the self-reporting. Uh, the reason that that's important for the public to do that is that w- in order for us to receive any funding from the state that may help with any mitigation, we have to meet a, a dollar threshold, um, and that would be county-wide. So it doesn't matter what city you're in, if you did have significant damage, um, we, we ask them to get on to uh, the, the Tulce City or Tulac County Emergency Management website and click the link and report the damage. Um, if that's harder, the, there's a phone number available, and I should have pulled it up, but I wasn't that well-prepared. Um, it is on our Facebook page, um, today, we wanted to try to be a good partner to provide more to the communities, uh, so Parks and Rec has donated two large dumpsters that we've placed at the fire station um, in Stansbury Park and one at Benson Griss Mill. Um, and then uh, Wayne has so generously offered to give us a, a lower rate to dump that, which is great with him being in an enterprise fund. So, it's really good to see all of our team come together to want to help the community. Along with that, there's still sandbag locations, we know that there's another storm coming in this weekend. Um, it's only slotted for about a half an inch rain, but you never know, so, um, sandbag locations are at the fire station. So, um, sandbag locations are at the fire station in Pine Canyon, the Spid parking lot, and then Tulac City has them at Fire Station Three on a Thousand North and at their, um, location, their roads location, um, just up, up the road. So.
Thank you. Anything else? Then I'll take, uh, chairman's privilege and just say, uh, I did have some flooding in my house and I was able to mitigate that. Councilman Thomas, thank you for your help and your tools.
Did you get it dried out?
It's, yes, we're, we're getting there, thanks to the window well. But we went up the canyon, that Soldier Canyon that very day with, um, some property owners and they were very appreciative of the roads department getting that bladed off quickly. So. With that, um, chair needs a motion to adjourn and go into a closed session for personnel. Here a motion for Councilman Hoffman, is there a second? Here a second from Councilman Strumberg, we'll do a roll call. Councilman Thomas, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilman Hoffman, how do you vote? Councilman Strumberg, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Hamner votes aye. Councilman Wardle, how do you vote? No?
Present.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. We're adjourned.